Good evening. Susan, I'm going to check with one of my commissioners. Are you getting my text? You're good? All right. Let's call this meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call a June 15th, 2023 regular meeting of the Encinitas Planning Commission to Order. Deena, how do I usually do this? My script calls for a roll call, but I believe we... Let's do a roll call so we get some a mic check. Is that okay, or should I just count them off? That's okay. Let the record show that four of the sitting planning commissioners are present with Commissioner Prendergast absent. And we like to begin each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We start each meeting with oral communications, where anyone wishing to speak on a topic not on tonight's agenda can request to do so by filling out one of the white speaker slips. Comments or questions during oral communications cannot be addressed or discussed by the planning commission or staff, but may be referred to the appropriate staff. Deena, do we have any oral communications this evening?
We do not have any.
Oh, we don't? Okay. Well, then, let's... And Anna, do we have any changes to the agenda? We do not? We move on to item six, the Consent Calendar. These items are considered non-controversial or routine in nature. They're typically voted on in one motion without any staff presentation, comment, or deliberation. However, if someone in the audience or one of the commissioners wishes to pull a consent item, it'll be removed and heard immediately following this vote. And tonight's consent calendar has three items. The approval of minutes from April 20th, 2023, approval of the minutes from May 4th, 2023, and the Vulcan 12 final map case number sub 4270-2021. And I know that one of our commissioners, Commissioner Ryan, you were absent, if I'm not mistaken, from the meeting on May 4th.
That's correct.
And in the past, we've allowed us to vote on this as a single motion with a note in the records that you're recusing from item 6B. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right. I'll second that. Can we get a vote? I see we're still having some tech issues over here to the left. All right. That was cool. The motion passes. Four votes yes and one vote absent. I don't see that marked, but that'll go into the minutes. Hmm. We're going to take just a pause while we figure a couple of things out. Not going to close the meeting, just... We're good?
Yeah.
Far out. We move on to our regular agenda. And on tonight's agenda, we have two regular items, and we'll jump straight into item 8A, the Fox Point Farm Planning Commission Interpretation, case number interpretation 6214-2023. Fox Point Farms is located at 1,200, 1,300, and 1,400 Fox Point Farms Lane, formerly 1150 Quail Gardens Drive. And this is a public hearing to consider an interpretation. I'm actually going to let the planner explain this one. Are there any disclosures from the commissioners? Hearing none. Let's move right on to a staff report from Rachel Lindabreck.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and members of the public. I am Rachel Lindabrecky with Development Services, and today I will be presenting on item 8A, the Fox Point Farms Planning Commission Interpretation. One second. There we go. The project site outlined here in red is located off Fox Point Farms Lane, just west of Quail Gardens Drive, north of Lucadia Boulevard, and east of Sedonia Street. The site is located within the Encinitas Ranch specific plan area and is zoned agricultural or ERAG and multifamily residential or ERR30. The project site is surrounded by single-family residential development to the west and south, and single-family home and a single-family home, and the Encinitas Ranch Golf Course to the east, and the Magdalena Ecke Park owned by the County of San Diego to the north. The site has historically been used as an agricultural use since prior to the city of Encinitas incorporation with greenhouses and miscellaneous agricultural structures. Subsequently, a portion of the site was upzoned to multifamily residential with a maximum of 30 dwelling units per acre as part of the 2013 and 2021 housing element update and as part of the approved Fox Point Farms agrahood development. The agrahood development was approved by Planning Commission on December 17th, 2020, which was then appealed to City Council, who denied the appeal and upheld the Planning Commission approval. The project approval included the construction of a 250-unit agrahood community, which included a community recreation facility, farm stand market, farm-to-table restaurant with accessory on-site alcohol sales, event venue, outdoor space, and farm with agricultural accessory structures. The residential component of the project was approved on two adjacent lots, which are not a part of the Planning Commission Interpretation request. The farm-to-table restaurant was approved with alcohol as an accessory use and obtained a type 47 on-sale general eating place license and a type 58 caterers permit license. The type 47 license authorizes the on-site consumption and sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the restaurant's indoor and outdoor dining areas, and the type 58 caterers permit authorizes alcohol for the on-site special events. The approved farm stand market, farm-to-table restaurant, event venue, and outdoor space is on a 1.9-acre lot zoned ERR30, and the farm operations with agricultural accessory structures is on the 5.5-acre lot zoned ERAG. The Planning Commission is being asked to find the following uses as accessory to the primary agricultural operation use pursuant to the permitted accessory uses section 6.22D of the Encinitas Ranch specific plan. The proposed uses include, one, the processing and production of beer, wine, and coffee on the ERAG-zoned site, and, two, the distribution of beer, wine, and coffee through an 80-foot-long underground distribution line to the adjacent farm-to-table restaurant. The Encinitas Ranch specific plan, section 622D, identifies that any use that is not specifically listed in subsection 622A, B, or C may be considered a permitted accessory use provided that the Director of Community Development finds that the proposed accessory use is substantially the same in character as those listed in said subsections, and finds that the accessory use is necessarily and customarily associated with, appropriate, incidental, and subordinate to the primary use. In August 2013, the City Council made the determination that the Planning Commission, rather than the Director, would make the final determinations on applications regarding uses involving alcohol. Therefore, since the accessory use determination is associated with the production and distribution of alcoholic beverages, specifically beer and wine, the Planning Commission is the appropriate body to make this determination. No, it's the same. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to utilize one of the two approved agricultural support buildings, specifically the southernmost agricultural support building closest to the previously approved farm-to-table restaurant, to process and produce beer, wine, and coffee. Additionally, as part of this operation, the applicant is proposing to install an 80-foot-long underground distribution line from the agricultural support building where the beer, wine, and coffee will be processed and produced to the adjacent farm-to-table restaurant. The distribution line is being proposed as an opportunity to create an efficient and hyper-local operation where the goods, beer, wine, and coffee, produced as part of the agricultural operation, will be consumed directly by the adjacent farm-to-table restaurant. This will result in reducing the packaging needs and waste, limiting off-site distribution needs, and associated vehicle trips. The use of the underground distribution line would allow the beer, wine, and coffee to not need to be kegged or bottled for transport to the restaurant and allow for a streamlined delivery of the product from the agricultural support building to the adjacent farm-to-table restaurant, which will be the final point of sale for these products. The city of Encinitas general plan includes several goals and policies that guide development within the city. The proposed accessory use at the project site is consistent with general plan goal one and policy 1.8 by supporting the primary agricultural use and the adjacent farm-to-table restaurant through the production and distribution of locally created products. By determining that the processing, production, and distribution of beer, wine, and coffee as an accessory use to the primary agricultural use, the determination is supporting the neighboring housing and the envisioned intent of the agrahood development concept. This determination further supports the primary agricultural, agricultural, commercial, and residential land uses within the surrounding area. The project site is located within the Sedonia East planning area, which is generally located on the east side of Sedonia Street and the western portion of the Encinitas Ranch specific plan area. The Encinitas Ranch specific plan allocated the subject site along with two adjacent parcels that are not a part of the Planning Commission Interpretation for an agrahood development consisting of 14.2 acres of residential use and 5.5 acres of agricultural use. A portion of the project site is located within the ERAG zone, with the farm-to-table restaurant being located within the ERR30 zone. Permitted uses within the ERAG zone include agricultural operations, agricultural facilities, and related production and distribution facilities. In addition, uses can be considered accessory when determined necessarily and customarily associated with and appropriate and incidental and subordinate to the primary agricultural use. Under Encinitas Ranch specific plan section 622A, agricultural operations and agricultural facilities are permitted uses under the ERAG zone. The operation of the Fox Point Farms falls under these permitted land use categories and is an allowable use. The Encinitas Ranch specific plan section 622D permitted accessory uses also identifies that any use that is not specifically listed in the subsections A, B, and C may be considered permitted accessory uses, again, provided the Director find the proposed accessory uses as substantially in same character as those listed in the said subsections and be necessarily and customarily associated with appropriate and incidental and subordinate to the primary use. The applicant is proposing to grow grapes, hops, and coffee beans, among many other crops, as part of the overall Fox Point Farms agricultural operations, which is a permitted use within the ERAG zone. The applicant proposes to utilize these crops to produce craft beer, wine, and coffee to serve the adjacent farm-to-table restaurant. The processing, production, and distribution of these products are proposed as an accessory use to the primary agricultural operations use. The proposed accessory use is necessarily and customarily associated with the primary agricultural operations use, as it is common for farmers to grow crops such as grapes, olives, and coffee beans, to produce a good or a product from that crop such as wine, olive oil, or coffee, and then distribute that product for consumption. The wine, beer, and coffee production would take place in one 1,504-square-foot building, which is a small portion of the overall 5.5-acre agricultural site. The proposed operation is appropriate incidental and subordinate to the primary use, since it makes up a small portion of the overall agricultural operation. Additionally, the use is incidental and subordinate because the larger farm operation and adjacent farm-to-table restaurant are two of the primary uses making up the larger agrahood development. The use of the underground distribution line would avoid the need for beer, wine, and coffee to be kegged or bottled for transport to the restaurant, and would instead create a direct and streamlined delivery system for the agricultural support building to farm-to-table restaurant. Therefore, with both agricultural production and distribution being permitted uses as identified in the Encinitas Ranch specific plan section 6.22A, the production and distribution of the coffee, wine, and beer being necessarily and customarily associated with appropriate and incidental and subordinate to the primary agricultural use, and the use further supporting the previously approved agrahood community concept, staff recommends the production and distribution of coffee, wine, and beer to be considered a accessory use to the Fox Point Farm operation pursuant to Encinitas Ranch specific plan section 622D. The Planning Commission Interpretation has been determined to not be subject to environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15060(c)(3), as the activity is not a project as defined in section 15378. As a part of the draft resolution of approval, staff included the unique form of distribution proposed at this time, which is through a distribution line, but would like to clarify that the interpretation would determine distribution as an accessory use in the broader context. In closing, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution of approval, which sets forth the finding that the processing, production, and distribution of beer, wine, and coffee to be considered an accessory use to the Fox Point Farms operations. And this concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Do we have questions for staff? Questions of clarification? I've got one. The production of beer and wine on agricultural property like that, does that require ABC approval?
It would, yes.
So, and so right now, that's not anything they could do. I mean, that would first have to come to us, or would that first go to ABC? I'm just trying to... I wasn't certain at the start whether we were so...
Understood. Yes, after the interpretation, the applicant would be required to obtain ABC licensing, and through that, ABC would be contacting Planning to ensure that it's been approved through this interpretation.
Okay, because, well, thank you. That's the only question I had. Anyone else? Well, let's say here, I'm going to first open public comment, and we'll start off by hearing from the applicant represented by Brian Grover, I believe. Don't hear yet. Give him 10 minutes.
There we go. All right. Brian Grover, Fox Point Farms Holdings. I'm here with our brewer here, Brian Carl. Yeah, I wasn't planning on giving a presentation, but I'll just speak kind of briefly. That was... I didn't know that there was that much to say about what we're doing. Great presentation, Rachel. We're just planning on growing hops and grapes and coffee beans and make beer, wine, and coffee. It's sort of that simple in my mind. We looked through the code, working with staff, and it seemed to squarely fit within this permitted accessory use. I was told I needed to take that to Planning Commission. But yeah, it's really just, this is perfectly fitting with the ethos of what we're doing at Fox Point Farms. We're opening in December. If you've been by the site, we're framing all of our commercial buildings right now, as well as the residential buildings. And yeah, it's just part of our hyper-local, you know, program. Part of our business is trying to minimize waste, minimize kegging, rather than bringing in a bunch of beers from Pure Project and Burgen and all these other breweries, and a bunch of wines from all these other wineries, and coffee from Lofty or wherever else we might get beans. We figured it would be more fitting to do it this way. We'll still bring in, you know, guest beers and things like that, guest wines, but we like the idea of creating all of these things ourselves to the extent that we can. So that's really what this is about. Ironically, Brian Carl, our brewer, I met six or seven years ago. He lives on Sedonia Street at the first meeting that we held, talking about the Fox Point Farms project, and I learned that he was a brewer, and here we are. He's going to be running our beer and coffee production, and then we have someone else who's helping out with wine production. We're working with Chris Cockins, who owns a property in Encinitas, kind of catty corner to Fox Point. You could almost throw a football from our site to his property to source some coffee beans as well. He's helping us with how we're going to be growing those coffee plants and things like that. But yeah, it's sort of a simple proposal in my mind to, you know, stay true to our form. So I'm here to answer any questions, but thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Brian. Any questions for him? No? Do we have public speakers on this item?
We do not.
We do not? All right. Well, everyone's here for the next item. Huh. Well, I will close public comment and open this up for commission deliberation. Does anyone have anything to say on this one? Somebody must.
I support it. I mean, it seems like a great idea, and I think it's pretty simple in its concept, and it seems like it's clearly a necessary use to me.
So I'm sorry, I do have a question for the applicant, if that's okay?
Yeah.
And it's more just out of curiosity as to what the timeframe would be. It seems like it would take maybe some years in order for this production to come to fruition and then for the transport to happen. What's your general timeframe?
Yeah, so we, like I said, we're on a construction right now. We're going to be grading out the farm next month. We'll be disking and preparing with a cover crop. We'll be planting all of our veggies, as well as these three crops, probably in, I would say, November-ish. So it'll take us a little while to get this component fully operational, but the farm will be fully operational, I'd say, in November. The restaurant, farm stand, event space, et cetera, is all going to be opening this December. So we're kicking things into the next gear as far as construction goes, and we'll be open very soon.
And will any of the beer, wine, or coffee that's produced be bottled or canned or anyway, or is it all for just use on the...
That's a good question. I did want to clarify, there's a little bit of an asterisk on that. So for some of the coffee, we can't transport it through the trunk line, so it'll be moved over by our farmer, you know, to that location. Some of the beer, I think two of the beers are on nitro, so those two beers need to be kegged, and the keg sits right behind... So there's a slight nuance, but yeah, that trunk line basically transports everything else. And again, we did that to minimize waste, washing of kegs, all the labor that goes into that. It's pretty intensive, trucks coming in, bringing other people's kegs, taking them away. You see it on 101 all the time. There's trucks sitting in the street just taking kegs. So we were trying to be very efficient with that, but yeah, there is a bit of a nuance with some of those things.
Okay. Additionally, my other part of that question is, will any of the product be bottled or canned or bagged for sale at the farm stand?
Right now, no. I will be likely coming back before you in a year or so. I've talked to the planning department about that. So if we do, if we do, you know, production line and we decide to can it and we want to sell it for off-site consumption at the farm stand, I would need your approval, and I don't yet have that. So that would kind of be phase two of this.
Okay, because I would think that if people are at the restaurant, they're like, I really like this coffee, or I really like this wine or beer, they'd like the opportunity.
Yeah, and that's the intent. And it's going to, you know, from the time that we plant grapes to the time that we're actually bottling wine, it's going to be a couple, you know, two, three years minimum on wine. But that's sort of the point. Hey, you enjoyed the wine that you had with your meal, you can buy it downstairs. But I don't yet have that right.
Okay. Thank you.
Cool. Sure thing.
Stick around for a sec. I had another question. Now, I have a pond that I run, you know, probably 200 feet of pipe back and forth, and it takes up a significant amount of water holding those pipes. How's that going to work? I, that's, I'm just picturing, you've got an 80-foot pipe full of beer or wine. Does it sit there overnight? Do you pump it clear and start it fresh each morning? How does, how does something like that work? It is the first time I've heard of the concept, and I kind of like it.
Yeah. Yeah, good question. So it works the same as any other glycol chilled system at any other restaurant or brewery or winery or whatever, it's just a lot longer. So it's a glycol chilled line, whatever is in there, beer, wine, coffee, et cetera, sits in that line overnight, and when someone pulls the tap on the other end, it comes out, and it's chilled, and it's fresh, et cetera. When you get to the end of, you know, if there's no more coffee, or no more wine, or no more beer, yeah, you need to clean it out, just like if you went anywhere else. But there's a process to do that. It's just a lot longer.
Yeah. I'm not in the restaurant business, so that one kind of threw me... Yeah, I'm not in the restaurant business, so that one kind of threw me just a little bit. I was picturing, yeah, thank you. That was it.
Yeah, okay.
I have a quick question. So the restaurant is open to the public?
Correct.
And anyone can come?
Correct.
There'll be parking, provided, bike racks? Great, thank you.
Yes, yep.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the project as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. And it's unanimous with the sitting commissioners, with Commissioner Prendergast being absent and displace. That's Fox Point Farms, you're done. Gentlemen, thank you. Moving on, our next up item is Item 8B. I think this is the main attraction tonight. This is the Moonlight Apartments, case number multi-4979-2021, located at 550 to 595 and 696 Encinitas Boulevard. This is a public hearing to consider a density bonus, design review permit, boundary adjustment, coastal development permit for the construction of a multifamily residential development consisting of 202 residential units, of which 30 will be low income. Do we have any disclosures from the sitting commissioners? Hearing none? Let's jump right into a staff report. And Christina Bustamante, hi, take it away.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Christina Bustamante. Nice to meet you all. I'll be presenting tonight. So I'll begin the slideshow. Give me just a minute while I figure out technical stuff. Okay. Okay, here we are. Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission, and members of the public. I will be presenting the Moonlight Apartments project tonight. The project site is located at 550, 590, and 696 Encinitas Boulevard, and consists of six legal parcels. The site is surrounded by single-family residential and multifamily residential development to the north, and approved multifamily residential project to the east. Encinitas Boulevard to the south, and commercial offices use, sorry, uses on the south side of Encinitas Boulevard. A small flower shop operated at the corner of Encinitas Boulevard and Quail Gardens Drive in 1998. A single-family residential home was demolished in October of 2018 per the City of Encinitas' demo permit number 8-2307. The site has been vacant since. These are photos of the current conditions of the site. There we go. All the parcels are shown on the slide. Our housing element site allocated to address the regional housing needs assessment for the City of Encinitas. It was referred to as Site 5, Encinitas Boulevard and Quail Gardens Drive sites, and the housing element identified the intent of the developer was to construct all parcels as a multifamily residential property. The 2021 and 2029, oh my gosh, 2029 Six Cycle Housing Element was certified by State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, on July 13, 2021. All project parcels are located within the natural, with residential 30 special cultural, special study Cultural Natural Resources overlay zone and coastal overlay. The project site is surrounded by the single-family residential and multifamily residential to the north, and approved multifamily residential project to the east, and commercial shopping centers to the south and west. The proposed applications include a density bonus, design review permit, coastal development permit, and boundary adjustment permit. The project is proposed as by right project with no subdivision proposed, and will provide 20% of affordable units. The project was reviewed under the municipal code development standards, city design guidelines, which preceded the current objective design guidelines, and the Encinitas Municipal Code. The project also was reviewed against the state density bonus law and government code section 65913.4, which states that local jurisdictions' direction on housing projects is limited to adopted objective standards. The project proposes 202 unit apartment buildings, the 172 market rate units, 30 low-income units, one residential building, a leasing office, landscaping, both active and passive open space areas, and grading and walls. The applicant is requesting a density bonus application and is utilizing density bonus units. The project is proposing 202 units total with 172 rate and 30 low affordable units. Project is providing 20% affordable units, and therefore could yield 149 units, and with a 50% density bonus, the project could obtain 224 units. But the applicant is using a 35% density bonus for a total of 202 units. The project provides a total of 20 inclusionary units that will be held as affordable in perpetuity, and 10 units that will be income restricted for 55 years at all the low-income category. The location of affordable units are dispersed throughout the project site and are located on each of the four floors. Conditions of approval are in place to secure the units and ensure they are compliant with all affordable housing requirements outlined within the state law and the Encinitas Municipal Code. No concessions are requested, but four are permitted with a project. Density bonus law has no limitation on waivers, and the applicant is requesting three waivers due to physical preclusion of dwelling units without waivers, as identified in the density bonus report. These exhibits depict the portion of the building one on the south westerly side. Forty-six feet, four inches is the average height of the residential portion of the building. Fifty-eight feet, oop, next slide, please. Fifty-eight feet, four inches is the maximum height to the elevator tower and stair tower that are required to meet life and safety standards. Forty-nine feet, 10 inches is the maximum height to the mechanical screens. Forty-six feet, four inches is the average height of the residential portion of the building, and that particular measurement, I'll probably repeat a couple of times, just to kind of show where that shows up. So on this slide, it's 46 feet, 4 inches is the average height, and you can see where it's pointed out there. And then we can go to the next slide. And then this is that particular elevation there, where you see on the southeast side of the project. And then this is the mechanical screens are set back 10 feet from the building face. Forty-six feet, 4 inches is the average height of the residential portion of the building, and 49 feet, 10 inches is the maximum height to the mechanical screens on this elevation. And then these are two of the rear elevations, which might be of interest to current residents that are there to the north. And then these exhibits to the portion of building one, that demonstrates the layered appearance of the building with three-story portion in the foreground, followed by a four-story portion, and then further setback, the parking structure, and the elevator tower. These exhibits depict the layout of stories of building one, with the three-story elements closer to the public right-of-way, and the four-story element set further back. And then these, this exhibit depicts the portion of the building that would encroach into the 10-foot setback from the interior property line. The setback ranges from 7 feet, 1 inch to 2 feet, 8 inches at the narrowest setback. This exhibit also demonstrates that had this all been one parcel, the buildings are set back at least 10 feet from the exterior property lines. And then for interior setbacks, a waiver for this portion of building is being requested. The project complies with R30 development standards, including those listed here, with the exception of the waiver for the increased height, increased max stories to four stories, and reduced setbacks from interior lot lines. The project meets and exceeds all parking standards for the residential uses. The project is in compliance with the EV charging requirements. EV charging stations and wiring is provided. 335 spaces are in the garage. There's three surface-level parking. Those parking spaces include parallel EV, open stall, and there's an excess of 88 parking spaces as required by state law parking ratios. The applicant was not required, but provided 50 bike parking spaces, which I thought was very relevant. Access to the site includes ingress and egress on Encinitas Boulevard. Quail Gardens Drive will feature an access intended for emergency vehicles and waste management. The project proposes ingress and egress on Encinitas Boulevard will utilize the existing signalized intersection and coordinate with the existing alignment. The project will generate 1,194 ADTs. General Plan Policy 1.3 allows development that results in an LOS of E or F at any intersection if no alternatives exist, and all overriding public need can be demonstrated. And so this is a lot of text to say that the existing LOS, what that is, and then what the existing LOS with the project is. In most cases, it stayed the same, it didn't change it. In one case, at this particular shopping center driveway in Encinitas Boulevard, it actually improved it by a little bit, where the level of service was A in the morning, and the level of service was B in the evening, and now with the project, it'll be level of service A, both AM and PM. Okay, the proposed project is proposing about 23 feet of cut and 12.8 feet of fill, and I'll pause just a moment here in my text to show you. The blue here is a very rough demonstration of where the cut is exceeding 8 feet, and the red there is a very rough demonstration of where fill is over 4 feet. This is very general, just very basic, it's not super detailed, so it's just to give you an idea. All right, continuing with the text. Has been reviewed and found to be in compliance with design guidelines. Cuts have been designed in order to lower the perceived heights of buildings adjacent to the sites, and fill has been minimized to the extent feasible. The proposed walls have been reviewed and found to be in compliance with the design guidelines. The taller walls will provide vines for growth. Design will include natural colors and paintings. The walls over 6 feet will be tucked into the back and located interior to the project. The proposed walls have been reviewed and found to be in compliance with the design guidelines. This exhibit demonstrates the condition as seen from one of the more pronounced grade changes in the project. As demonstrated in this illustration, the soil nail wall will be tucked into the back of the project and would not be readily visible to the general public. Based on the net acreage of 4.63, 139 trees are required, and the project proposes 240 trees. 222 on-site, 18 within the right-of-way, which ranges in size from 24-inch box to 36-inch box. The landscape standards also requires a minimum of 50% of the landscape to be planted with native plants. In this case, the project is providing 67% of the landscape area with native plant types. The landscape standard requires 15% of the project area to be landscaped. In this case, the project area is 2,000, or sorry, 201,483 square feet, and is required to provide 30,220 square feet of landscape area. The project is providing 63,997, so almost double that, square feet of landscape area with 59,849 square feet on-site, and 4,148 square feet of off-site landscape in the right-of-way. The landscape plan includes a variety of shrubs, plants, ground cover, and vines on the site, and is in compliance with all landscape standards. Community open space amenities include a pool, a spa, a California room, a variety of outdoor seating types to accommodate all residents, gaming plaza, a bike storage, bike and vehicle charging stations, a meditation studio, exterior beach and surf wash, fitness center with fitness mezzanine, outdoor fitness area, outdoor kitchens with barbecue, various outdoor dining areas, and a dog park, a lot of stuff. It's a lot of stuff. The project was found to be in conformance with the objective building design guidelines. This image shows buildings from the perspective of looking northeast towards the project. The image shows the building from the perspective of looking northwest toward the project from Encinitas Boulevard. This is the view of the building looking northeast from Encinitas Boulevard. This is the view of the building looking northeast from Encinitas Boulevard. As you can see in these images, the project shows varying building styles, heights, roof lines, and colors, and the buildings from interior view. This is a perspective looking northwest from Encinitas Boulevard. The boundary adjustment is proposed to consolidate four of six existing parcels labeled as parcel A within this exhibit. The parcels comply with the EMC lot area width and depth requirements, with the exception of lots two and three, which are shown here on the bottom. They do not comply with the standards of lot size requirements, but are existing lots. Also, wanted to note that Lot 2 and 3 property lines are not being modified, and that all services are available for development. And then there is a permit modification to relinquish a previous permit, and these are older permits that were on the record, it's just to clean up. It was for a flower stand. The project requests were found to be in compliance with the Encinitas Municipal Code and General Plan, therefore, the project was found to be in compliance with the local coastal program. A citizen participation program was conducted two times, applicant was only required to host one. During the first meeting, 13 members of the public attended the meeting, while the second follow-up meeting, only three members of the public attended. The concerns that were raised during the CPP meeting were addressed, and details of those meetings can be found in the CPP reports as attachment P6. The public correspondence received during the public period, public noticing period, 24 letters were received, 19 were for support of the project, five letters with comments or concerns for the project. The project is a by right project, and the list of technical studies listed here addresses all the elements of the environmental assessment. These can all be found in the attachments to the staff report. We have staff from each discipline available to answer any questions. All righty, and this is a by right project, according to this government code section. Provides 20% of lower-income affordable units, does not require a subdivision. The city may only require design review approval of the project, and it's statutorily exempt from CEQA. In closing, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving the planning applications, adopt CEQA findings, adopt the statement of overriding consideration, and that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Christina.
I have one more.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, there's no statement of overriding considerations, sorry about that, that's a mistype on my part. There was a memo that was given to you that gave some tax amendments to the resolution. We can go in those, into more detail if you'd like, but the memo was provided.
Can we pull that up or anything? I don't, I don't believe I have that memo. I'm sure it came this afternoon.
Sure, let me, give me just a moment. It should have been emailed. Would you like me to pull it up?
If you would, please.
Okay.
And it's also posted on, online as well.
Let me sit back. There it is. Oh, that's not the PDF. Oh, that's not the PDF. Yeah, this is our edited version, it's not the final. Yes.
If we were in the old days, I could just put it under a microfiche or something to show you. I have hard copies here.
We're much too modern for that. I'm sure, did I...
Dina, is it under the agenda?
We're, we're much too modern for that. I'm sure, did I?
Dina, is it under the agenda? Um, if you bring up Granicus online on the agenda, yeah, it's the second to last attachment.
Thank you.
Sorry, I generally don't check my email after four on the night of a meeting, but I can see, uh...
Okay, um, so the memo's up right now. I apologize. It's not very large. Are you able to read it?
Uh, I see the gist is, uh, we had a typo. We referred to a previous property, a previous project.
Mm-hmm.
In ST 13.
Yes, so ST 13, correct.
Looks like we're a victim of cut and paste here. There is no existing underground or utility lines to be undergrounded. Um, and a homeowners association was also moot point.
This is the second?
I feel someone... That's, uh, thank you. That was, just needed to...
Okay.
Um, let's see now. We're, we're having a host of technical issues this evening. Yeah, let's, uh, move on. Um... Do we have any more questions for staff? Anybody? If not, I'm gonna let the, uh...
I've got a question. Uh, go ahead. You referred to average height for the building heights, and I'm not used to referring to average height. Are those the maximum heights, or how does, what's determining average? Is that a new term that we use?
Yeah, so average in this case, the topography of the site, as well as the building, is changing quite a bit. And so it would be a lot to call out every single height point for that. So we have attempted to consolidate that a little bit and to communicate that a little more clearly by saying, overall, it's that average measurement. And so that's why we're identifying the average measurement, as well as the maximum height of that residential portion, or the mechanical screens, or the stairwell. Does that help?
Thank you. Um, and this is reviewed under the Objective Design Standards or the old design standard, or old standards?
Good question. So this would be under the old design standards.
And am I correct that parcels two and three are not, are, are remaining unique parcels? They're not being consolidated into the one larger parcel A?
Yes, you are correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dalton. Commissioner Sheridan, Ryan, any questions for staff? In that case, I'm gonna open public comment. And let's, uh, let's kick it off with a present, presentation by our applicant, uh, Richard Price. Is it? Doesn't matter who. That's just the name that was on here. Introduce yourself, please.
A couple people presenting tonight. So, my name is Jason Check with Rain Tree Partners.
Hey, Jason.
Thank you. Honored to be here tonight. Thank you, Commission. Um, it's been a long process to get here, so we're excited to be presenting. And if we can pull up the presentation, no problem.
Okay, there we are.
All right. Uh, well, as I said, it's been a couple of years, and, and staff has worked very diligently to review this project. Uh, we've taken a lot of feedback in from the community, from staff. And, uh, I'm, like I said, I'm honored to be here tonight to present a project that we're very excited about. Uh, Rain Tree Partners, we are a local development firm. We're based in Dana Point. We have projects only in California, from San Diego up to San Francisco, but our focus is rental housing in California. That's all we do. Uh, we've been doing that for 16 years. We have not sold a property. We've developed. Uh, so we are a long-term investor in this community. And I'm a 20-year resident of North County, so I live in Carlsbad and excited to be doing a project closer to home. So a few things. I think Christina did a fabulous job kind of running through the project, but a couple items I wanted to focus on are really the context of this site and the R30 sites that are available. Uh, when you look at where this site's located, I mean, it's really in the heart of the city in an area where it's close to the freeway, or across the street from a commercial center. Uh, we're walking distance to downtown. We've got bus stops immediately adjacent to the site on Encinitas Boulevard. Uh, this is just a, a great location for rental housing. Uh, we are providing 30 affordable units. And, you know, as was referenced, we had almost 20 letters of support for this project, many of which were from residents immediately surrounding, uh, the property, which I think speaks to, you know, the effort we put into really receiving feedback and acknowledging it and responding to it. Uh, here's the site. I'm gonna skip this slide as we spent quite a bit of time on location. I want to get into just how we evolved the design of the project. Um, I'm hoping that we get some questions on just how the overall, uh, design progressed from feedback from the community as well as staff. I'm gonna skip these next two slides that really show projects in the community of equal scale, and I think there were some interesting things that were done to these projects that we mirrored in conceiving our own. This is a view of the site going up Encinitas Boulevard. Uh, in the eastern direction, the black arrow is along Encinitas Boulevard, where my colleague Rick will walk through a lot of improvements we'll be making to that portion of the street. And then we had a large hill. I think the same image was shown. But if you took, you know, a knife and cut through that hill, that red dotted line is the outline of the existing hillside. And so when we were conceiving this project, just the idea of trying to de-emphasize the scale and push the project as far to the north as we could was really at the top of our list. So, you know, what we did was essentially spread out that hillside, pushed the building to the north at a safe distance from the property line to the north so we could, you know, terrace down and put our larger retaining in the back of the property and de-emphasize the property on, the project's mass on the front towards Encinitas Boulevard by pulling it an average of 85 feet off of Encinitas Boulevard. Uh, that area in the green is where we pulled the top level of the property down one story in certain locations where it's closest to Encinitas Boulevard to kind of step the project down back to the original scale of, uh, what exists today. Uh, this is, uh, a, a kind of graphic showing how we really broke the building into two component parts. Uh, that was a step that we made after our first, uh, community meeting, our first CPP meeting. And we actually redesigned a portion of the building, uh, made some changes to the original building, and then went back out again for another CPP meeting. Uh, and, you know, got good feedback in terms of the changes we made. So with that, I'm gonna yield the floor to my colleague Rick, who's gonna talk more about just the specific site plan and, and look forward to answering questions tonight. Thank you.
Uh, thanks. My name is Rick Price. I'm also with Rain Tree Partners. Um, I spent my childhood visiting my grandparents in Encinitas, and so really grew up at Moonlight Beach. And so for me, this is, um, an exciting opportunity to do something more local in, in Encinitas um, at the beach that, that I still kind of call home in some ways. Um, uh, as it relates to the project, there's a few highlights that I want to point out. Um, first of all, we do have a meaningful affordable component here. We have 30 affordable units that are spread evenly throughout the project. The project is well-parked to meet market demands and keep cars out of the local neighborhoods, which was a concern, uh, of some of the local residents. We have generous setbacks both on the north side of the property and also the south. And then there are three important landscape improvements that I wanted to point out that far exceed the municipal code. Um, first of all, 240 new trees, which Christina brought up. This is approximately 75% more than is required. Um, a significant amount of trees, and then twice as much planting area as is required under the code, and 95% of our plants would be drought tolerant, and 67% are native species. We have heard the complaints about traffic, and we are taking significant steps to mitigate those to the extent we can. Um, it starts with a 14-foot dedication of our property along Encinitas Boulevard back to the city to widen Encinitas Boulevard. And what this, um, results in is no change to the level of service at the Encinitas Boulevard intersection in Quail Gardens. Um, it also, uh, this, this is, um, also a result of this is a 3.7 reduction in the wait times in the morning hours, uh, from the current situation. And this is because of light synchronization that we will execute, as well as a new third through lane on Encinitas Boulevard. So we're increasing the width of the street by 30%. Um, there is also, I don't get to say this very often, but we actually are improving the level of service at the project entry, so I, I did want to make sure that I got that. Um, as developers, that's not, uh, something we often get to say. Um, but we are proud of that from a level of service B to A. This is a depiction of these, uh, improvements. So you can see, uh, well, first of all, 900 feet of new curb gutter and sidewalk where nothing exists today. Huge improvement from the current condition. Uh, traff, uh, buffered, a new buffered bike lane, and then a new through lane shown in orange, um, increasing the width of the street. There's also a high-visibility crosswalk linking the project at the front door to the adjacent Smart and Final, Smart and Final Center, which also serves, um, the Essex Apartments to our west and Playa Mar Apartments to our north, and the neighborhoods up Quail Gardens Drive. We're also extending the left turn pockets at, on Encinitas Boulevard and Westlake to accommodate more vehicles. And, um, this image in the bottom right is just to show, uh, how that 14-foot dedication is being used for, um, purposes of improvements for the transportation and public amenities. The project is richly amenitized, and this is an example of many of the e- exterior outdoor amenities where our residents can enjoy the climate in Encinitas. This is a list of some of our more impactful amenities. Um, a key component to us was the bike and beach-friendly access at this property. So this includes a beach and surf wash, storage for 50 e-bikes, and actually even more. Uh, and then generous accessible pathways at grade to get from these spaces to Moonlight Beach and also to downtown. Um, and the images on the right are meant to show the qual, the level of quality that we plan to deliver as long-term owners. We, uh, hold our properties for a long time, and it's important to us that our residents love where they live so that they stay. Sustainability was a big focus for us as well. This is a list of some of the sustainable measures we would plan to execute, including solar PV, energy-efficient fixtures and appliances, uh, and in our case, 95% drought-tolerant plants. So it's, it's a lush landscape, but it's a sustainable lush landscape. Finally, we are requesting three waivers under state density bonus law. Um, the first two, height and story, are related, and the building proposed is just over 46 feet, three and four stories, so one story beyond the code require, or the, the code allowance. The third waiver request is for an internal lot line setback that we cannot meet. Um, we limited the waivers to those we deem necessary to maintain the permitted density, level of quality, necessary amenities, and adequate parking of a viable project. Staff, um, had positive findings as it relates to the waivers. And there are, um, actually benefits that I wanted to point out just in closing with these waivers. We do, we have a reduced lot coverage from the code max of 65% and increased setbacks along Encinitas Boulevard in the north proper, the north end of the property. 85 foot is our average setback along Encinitas Boulevard, and 20 to 45 feet is our setbacks along the north end of the property, which exceed the 10-foot limit. So, um, we feel we've designed a project that fits the site and the community, provides much-needed housing, um, to battle the affordability and availability crisis that we're experiencing statewide in Encinitas. And we look forward to, um, hopefully your support and are here to answer questions.
Thank you. Um, we can ask questions now if someone wants, or we'll go to public comment and we'll call you back. Do we have public speakers in this, this evening?
Yes, we do.
How many, do you think?
We have five, and then in addition, we have two, um, in opposition that do not wish to speak.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's hear from our public speakers. Uh, three minutes on the clock.
Okay.
Time donations are okay.
First up is Adam Frankel, followed by Ron DeMuth.
It's public open, sorry.
Uh, good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Adam Frankel. I'm an attorney with the law firm Lozo Jury LLP. I'm here on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER. SAFER requests that the commission not approve the project at this time because it is not, in fact, exempt from SEQA. The staff report and the proposed resolutions in front of you have essentially fabricated a SEQA exemption based on a misreading of the government code. No such SEQA exemption exists for this project, and it must undergo SEQA review before being approved. Although Government Code Section 65583.2 exempts certain housing projects from SEQA where design review is the city's sole discretionary authority over the project, this project requires additional discretionary approvals beyond design review, including a coastal development permit. Section 65583.2 does not provide an exemption from SEQA for these discretionary actions. The staff report is incorrect in suggesting that Section 65583.2 creates an exemption from SEQA. The cited code sections pertain to the city's housing element and require the city to zone sufficient sites within its boundaries as by right in order to meet statewide affordable housing requirements. These provisions further require that these designated sites be at least 20% affordable and not be subject to any discretionary actions that would trigger SEQA review. However, the proposed project does not meet these criteria because its location in the coastal zone requires discretionary approval of a coastal development permit, which constitutes a project under SEQA. Where discretionary approval is required, a project cannot be exempt from SEQA. The staff report misinterprets Section 65583.2 and cites to a non-existent test to assert that the site is exempt from SEQA review. This so-called test has no basis in law and does not withstand scrutiny. In contrast, the courts have long applied a functional test detailed in our written comments for distinguishing ministerial from discretionary actions under SEQA. Here, the project requires four discretionary approvals from the city: a density bonus, a design review permit, a boundary adjustment permit, and a coastal development permit. Because the coastal development permit grants, or CDP, grants the city the power to shape the project in ways that are responsive to environmental concerns, the project qualifies as a discretionary project and is subject to SEQA. Specifically, per the city's municipal code, approval of the CDP requires three discretionary findings which relate to health, safety, and welfare. Under the well-established functional test, this means that the project is discretionary and requires SEQA review. Because the project requires discretionary approvals, it is not eligible for exemption from SEQA. SAFER respectfully requests that the planning commission continue further consideration of the project to allow time for staff to conduct SEQA review of the project through an environmental impact report or negative declaration. Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Ron DeMuth, followed by Celia DeMuth.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a homeowner at 198 Pacific View Lane in Sea Ranch Estates. Uh, a couple of points. One, for the record, there is no such road as Quail Drive. That road is a private road called Quail Road. So you need to correct your records. I find it extremely offensive. Secondly, um, the building height that's being proposed is extreme by prior and historical Encinitas standards. The height proposed is very concerning, given the extreme and dramatic topological relief of that site. I urge the commission members to physically visit and walk that property so they understand what's being proposed. Internally, this is a beautifully designed program, and I commend Rain Tree for that. Externally, in the context of the larger community, it is blight. Two, the parcel and Sea Ranch Estates development has a long and contentious history. As you, if you've been served on this commission for any length of time, you know that there was an attempt to basically blow a road from Pacific View Lane to Encinitas Boulevard, which was opposed by the homeowners, and we ultimately succeeded in preventing that from happening. We will be equally vigorous if this space is not modified. It is a blight. Three, Quail Road is a private road. There are easements, varies because there were three developments on that road, so those three developments each have slightly different easements, but the easements largely consist of an SDG&E, utility easement, and a San Diego irrigation district easement. I recently improved my section of Quail Road, and I fully intend to defend any encroachment on that. The reason I mention this is because both this developer, at one point, and the prior developer proposed, and the city, under, I guess it's the Walkable Neighborhoods Initiative, proposed putting a public pedestrian walkway through the middle of Quail Road. We have historically, and one of my neighbors is here, has had chronic problems of people lurking, trespassing on their private property, crawling over walls. It's a public safety issue that we have to take seriously. Four, the traffic study by the staff found that, excuse me, that there will be no meaningful impact on traffic by the addition of this development. Again, I welcome further development, especially of that property. I just don't think this is the right one. I find it almost ludicrous to imagine that there will be no traffic impact, given the plans for further development of multi-unit housing on Encinitas Boulevard and further on El Camino Real. There are three-
We can sum this up, sir. We're past our-
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Sylvia DeMuth, followed by Stephen Gurken.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am following up on what my husband Ron DeMuth said. We live at 198 Pacific View Lane and have been there for 20 years, and we fought many a battle about encroachment on our property. I want to say that I do support the attorney's assertions that were made about the law tonight and that this project should not be approved with these waivers. I have issues because they have an extreme impact on our community. I don't want to see the density increased. It started with 170 apartments, and now that's blown up. Number two, the waivers that are being considered concerning the height and story will definitely have an impact on our homes. We're not even sure what the model should look like, is going to actually look like. Can we have a physical construction of what that would look like? Are there going to be homes on the back of these apartments, or are these apartments abutting the existing homes, which are our homes? There's been a lot of confusion about what that actually looks like physically. And for me to have to download 557 pages to look at this is ludicrous. It has been inaccessible to most people who don't have the bandwidth to do all of this. We need it simplified. Can we simply have a model, a scale model, that we could look at? There is a problem, as I said, with density. I would not like to see that waiver approved. With the boundaries, what are the actual boundaries of the property? There should be no walkway along that easement, which is part of it is our property. The height, and then the traffic, as my husband has mentioned. I don't know what methodology you use for doing these traffic studies, but I can assure you, I don't think they've taken into account the Fox Farm apartments that are being built and some of the other initiatives further east on Encinitas Boulevard as far as traffic. I have a very difficult time with ingress and egress just getting to my home. So I have several questions, and I do oppose that this, any of these waivers be approved tonight. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Next up is Stephen Gurken, followed by Ron Hubbard.
My name is Steve Gurken. I'm an Encinitas resident. I'd like to welcome another Housing Element Site Discussion to the Planning Commission tonight. I understand the need for more housing, especially housing for low and very low-income residents. So how can that be done well, by design, by creative elements, and safely, and makes this housing an attractive element of our city? So given the seriousness of this, I'll interject a little humor. I have some good news and some bad news. Does anyone have a preference, what they want to hear first? I'll start with the good news. That's my preference, too. I like this project because, one, it doesn't cram the maximum number of units allowable onto the site. The design breaks up the building into a few units to reduce massing. It has varied architectural angles, which I find attractive. It has vertical relief, which I learned by reading its facade design, to make it appear attractive. The design minimizes, but not completely, building massive roof lines, which is part of our project design standards. It improves the quality of our city by, I think, creating a landscape meandering promenade that will tie into the Sunshine Gardens promenade. It installs a sidewalk. It reinstalls a bike lane that's buffered, and it doesn't dump its traffic onto Quail Gardens Drive, already a highly impacted two-lane collector road, but onto a prime arterial built to handle large volumes of traffic. It has U-turns that it talks about mitigating some of the traffic impact. It provides a lot of storage for each unit. It has a bike locker, although hanging e-bike from the ceiling, while efficient, probably isn't practical due to their weight. It provides parking with an out-of-site parking garage, unlike everybody else. Its architectural design, to me, is striking. It's not industrial. It's not monolithic concrete. It's not a tip-up. It's not cheap by design, which is like many of the other plans that you have before you or have coming before you. It didn't ask for waivers to maximize density and corporate profit for a short flip in an exit. And the geotechnical analysis was a very enjoyable, very well-written, historical and geological description of this part of Encinitas and what we live on top of. I think everybody should read it. Okay, now the bad news. Emergency vehicle access is coming from the north side. That shows cars coming in and out of there. It shows, how will that be addressed? How will that keep every single UPS driver, every single driver that wants to deliver doesn't want to use the main entrance from coming in? Is that where the trash trucks are coming in? Because it says there's a trash pickup there. So while we were told there was no use of that property on the backside, on the north side, would it please be addressed? What is its use? Where's the parking for service vehicles and service vehicles with equipment trailers going to be? What else? I recommend a special condition to prohibit any parking except for emergency use only on that background. I'm going to wrap this up. I was going to address SEQA and why there isn't a SEQA analysis, but that's, I'm not an expert on that. In conclusion, I think this could be a development with a very attractive addition to the multifamily and apartment living residents who choose to live in Encinitas. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker is Ron Hubbard.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Thank you for listening. I have a few complaints about this project. I'm definitely opposed against it if you give them the waivers. It's all about math for me. I know some people don't have all the numbers, but when I went through the drawings, I saw a building that was 54 eight-high, not 49 feet, as just represented. And I think our max is 35 feet for our 30 properties. Make them make it 35 feet. Why not? We have a rule. Four stories. Make them make it three stories. That's what it is. Four stories is 33% bigger than what we allow in Encinitas for our 30 properties. They actually did get the density bonus or are asking for the bonus, so they are going for the maximum amount of units they could put on that property. So a two-foot-eight setback, that's that much. We have a 10-foot setback rule here. Let's enforce it. I don't get to build my house two-foot-eight from the property line, or let me, because it's out of hand. Two-foot-eight is crazy. Tell them to push the corner back and make it fit in the land. This issue about traffic right there, actually 55% of the traffic is said in their report to go on Quail Gardens. Quail Gardens, which is now, there's three apartment complexes with this one, Quail Meadows and Sunshine Gardens, is now a total of 827 apartment units trying to get into that corner. So when we do a traffic study, can't we do a study of all three of these projects? We're looking at each project individually. This project right here puts 1,285 car trips on Encinitas Boulevard, and 600 of them are headed towards Quail Gardens that is already impacted, and it's crazy. And by the way, this exit is, I know it's the best thing they could do, but it's at a blind corner. You're going 45 miles an hour down Encinitas, and then the sign right in front of their property says 40. Well, it's pretty scary right there when that light is red. So I would absolutely make them put another light or some kind of warning at the corner of Encinitas, because you know how bikes come flying down that thing, and if it's a red light, it's going to be bad, because there's going to be a lot more red lights with 1,200 cars trying to get out of this place every day, out and in. And by the way, I don't know why the traffic studies don't do deliveries, because all I know is on my block, there's an Amazon guy every day. And so an Amazon guy every hour is going to be inside this, trying to get in this complex and out, and it's one little cul-de-sac to turn around. Let's see. Four stories, three. I think I'm pretty much done. Thank you.
Thank you. It seems like that is it for public speakers. I'd say, the applicant, would you like to come in and address any concerns that were raised?
Yeah, thank you. We submitted a letter responding to the Lozier letter from a couple of days ago, and that was, that's on the record in the staff report. I'd be happy to read it again if you would prefer to hear it in response to the claim.
I don't need you to read a Loier letter.
Okay. That's on the record for your review. I'll say, in response to the several comments about the building height, we are, as Jason pointed out in his presentation, our intent was to set this building into the hillside. And as you saw in that section cut, the building more or less mirrors the hillside. There's 70,000 feet of off-haul that allows us, that would allow us to bury that garage out of sight, and that was a specific design element that we did in order to mitigate residents' perception of the height. We, as far as the waivers go for that, and there was another comment made about, I think, a setback of two and a half feet, that was an interior lot line setback, so not a front or side or front street setback. And we have a waiver for that as well, or we're requesting one. The waivers that we requested are under state density bonus law in order for us to achieve the permitted density. So both the height and that interior lot line setback are necessary for us to have a viable project of 202 units. There was a comment brought up about the emergency vehicle access, and that is, that access is only for emergency vehicles and trash. We will have trash accessing that location two times a week, and then otherwise, it's only for emergency vehicles. There is no possible way from that location to deliver a package. The mailroom is at the primary entry to the project, and we do have a dedicated move-in area in that auto court at the top of the ramp for such deliveries. The traffic study, we do have our traffic consultant here tonight, and we can address specific questions on that. I think a common question that's raised is why the project didn't study the other adjacent projects, and as a by-right project, that is not a requirement to study the other projects, nor do we always have the information to study them. So those are my responses.
I have a few questions for the applicant.
I'm not going to close public comment, because I got a feeling we may have several questions to different experts here. Should I? My mic's not on? Oh. I'm saying I'm not closing public comment just yet, because I expect there will be additional questions. Go for it, Steve.
We heard some concern about Quail Road. Could you just, I can't find an access point where you're taking any access from Quail Road or anything connecting you to that. Is there any connection between your project and Quail Road?
No, there's no connection to our project. We initially talked to staff about allowing for fire access up Quail Road, and that was denied, so that was the only use that we had for it. But we have, there is a retaining wall along Quail Road at that sort of cul-de-sac there, but that's, there's no access. And the walkway, there is a walkway, a sidewalk, that goes around the perimeter of our site for fire access, but it does not connect to Quail Drive.
Thank you. Lots two and three are remaining as separate lots. Is there a reason that they're not consolidated into the overall project?
Yeah, so we had six lots originally. We elected not to consolidate those. That would trigger a subdivision, and this is an apartment project, and we have no need for a subdivision, so we elected to keep those lots as is. I believe the city council recently made a determination on this topic, and so that, I believe, is a commonality.
Okay. I'm curious if you have a two-foot setback from an interior property line from a CBC or building code standpoint, do you have an issue with the percentage of openings on your wall if it's not facing a right-of-way?
That's probably a good question for our architect.
Sure.
I'm not sure.
It would come up in building permits. Not an issue for me tonight, and so I'm not trying to make it a big point of discussion.
Yeah, well, Tobin's here. We can probably answer that question.
Thank you, Commissioners. So the, my name is Tobin Semink with AO, and because we have an interior lot line, it is still part of the property. If we had an interior lot line that was owned or would be subject to separation, being bought by another, that's when it would trigger a concern. An interior lot line that is owned by the same property owner, though by, in the building code, it's all, it's treated as one. Now, if it were a separate property, yes, then you start getting into the requirements of openings away from that interior lot line, but in this case, because it is owned by the same property developer, that issue goes away.
Is there anything in the deed that would prevent you from selling parcels two or three?
I can, there is a condition in the resolution that prevents them from selling parcels two and three, because they are needed for the bioretention basin for parcel A.
Thank you. I think that's my list. Thank you.
I had a question. We're removing 70,000 cubic yards of fill. Looks sandy to me, and I'm wondering if there's going to be a chance for an opportunistic sand reclamation from this.
Yeah, we have actually been in touch with staff on that and have explored that option. At the time of excavation, it really, it comes down to the quality that we end up with, which we don't know yet, but it's something that we're very open to, as I would love to see more sand at Moonlight.
Yep, I kind of guess-
Yep, I kind of guessed you would, being local. So as long as you're open on that one.
Yeah, we are. We're open to it.
I kind of had another, I don't know if it's a, it's not even actionable, but concern on the look of the back of the properties. We're coming down Quail Gardens Drive, heading towards Encinitas Boulevard, the back of building, well, it's not really broken up by buildings. It's in like the partial north elevation. It's that wing that sticks out, the one part where it sticks out, that everything's coming down. And I look at the articulation, it's kind of like it's a big flat panel with little blue boxes. Yep. No, one more. Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. There it is, top left. That big old gray box.
What page of the staff report?
Well, that's a good question.
Sheet A 4.5 of the architectural plans?
It was also in the wall plane section, which I believe was part of the, actually, I probably got it right here in front of me, which I believe was part of the civil plans. It was an awful lot of paper. If anyone commented on that, we do this often. So yeah, if I look at Architectural Plan 2.9, I don't know, can we pull that one up?
Is it A 2.9?
2.9, this is, but this one shows the articulation, or the, yeah, right there.
Is this one? Okay.
So I mean, on this one, the only, the only part you're really going to see is that dark gray piece to the left, which is not very dark gray up there. But it's only showed up in one of the renderings. It's very flat, and while, yes, it does meet our planer guidelines for the objective design standards, it's going to be really visible, and you should, if possible, try and jazz that up a bit. It's the only one that doesn't have a rendering from that direction. But honestly, it's, aside from being like, it kind of knocked me on my rear when I saw how big it was, I mean, it's a big looming presence, but I did, I've been up and down that hill. I was climbing there, I walked around, I dug myself, I got stuck with a bunch of little bushes, I was at, all the way at the edge. I was on Quail Road, you know, I'm not really asking you any more questions anymore. You can, you can have a seat if you want, unless someone else wants to dive in. Yes, Steve does.
Just one last, for me at least.
We'll go to deliberations.
The crosswalk, how is the placement of the crosswalk across Encinitas Boulevard determined? I see it's on the west side of your driveway, but the access stair from your project to the street is on the east side of your driveway.
Yeah.
Is there flexibility about which side the crosswalk would go on?
That crosswalk location was determined by the city engineer, so I'm not sure if that could be relocated. I think it has to do with the existing light that is there.
I think it also leads more directly to the complex there, otherwise you're just coming to Smart and Final.
I had a question.
Go for it.
I have a question regarding the units, and the one, two, and three-bedroom units. So I read that there was a condition that one of the two-bedroom affordable be changed to a three-bedroom affordable?
Yeah, that's correct.
Where in the complex that will be?
Yeah, Christine is probably pulling that up. I think it's, it'd be one of the, it would be the first level general floor plan. I think A 3.1. Yeah, or A 3.0. So the three-bedroom unit that we're designated, that we're designating is that unit labeled C1, at the finger adjacent to pool courtyard. Right there. So at the ground level adjacent to pool.
Thank you. Another question, what's a gaming plaza?
Oh, that's like where you play cornhole and, you know, ping pong, outdoor ping pong. Any other questions?
Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll move on to deliberations. I will close public comment for now. We'll reopen if we need to pull people back up. I could start, or anyone else want to run with this? I'll open it up. As I pointed out, I thought the project was, you know, it's always a bit shocking, and it is pretty, you know, when you look at the renderings, it seems looming, but when you're there on the property, I mean, the biggest thing noteworthy is you climb the top of that hill, and you're, whatever, 60 feet above the road. It's, so that's, being aware that all that sand is going to go away. First, it's shocking, but you know, we don't want houses perched on top of sandstone bluffs. We want them, we want them tucked, and I do feel this kind of follows the line of the property. I know Quail Road pretty well also. I think I'm the only one on the planning commission who was there. My very first planning meeting, six and a half years ago, was when we were looking at where should the, where should the roundabout be at the end of Pacific View Lane? You remember this. And there was talk, they wanted to bring it down, a steeper slope, down to where 141 Quail Road is, and we did not approve that. And we kind of pretty much put a line in the sand there. It's going no further. And I think there was discussion of bridging that to Encinitas Boulevard, but we pretty much poo-pooed that notion. That was not to be. It's, it would have been crazy. Quail Road is, Quail Road is, you know, going to run alongside this property, but there is no real connection to it. So I did not see that as an issue. I do remember your issues with Pacific View Lane very well. You know, the only people I see who are really going to take a serious impact are the lowest three buildings on the Playa Mar apartment complex, the ones who are basically looking at the back of that one building that I mentioned, closest to Quail Gardens Drive. You know, it'd be nice if something would be worked out, but it's, the building is still relatively far away, and it's not really actionable on our part. The waivers, you know, I don't think we can get away with waivers. It's not up to us to just decline waivers. We've done this on a couple of cases, but we, the city had to spend literally hundreds of thousands of dollars to make plans proving that things couldn't be. We have to prove a negative to deny a waiver, and we really have no grounds for that at this stage. It's a beautiful location for this project. It's actually the first one that's really like where it's going to be useful. It's really close to bus routes. It's really close to traffic. An extra driveline going south is going to be awesome. I mean, as I was pulling out of the Smart and Final lot this morning, I was, watched a young gentleman pushing a Bob Stroller, a little baby in it, and his little girl following along him, and he was kind of humping up over the dirt to get around the light poles where no sidewalks exist. Once you get onto this property, that's, it's a treacherous roadway. So I really like the extra driveline. I love pushing the people back a little bit, I mean, connecting, having, honest to God, the first time we'll have safe connectivity along this stretch. And there's, it's a heavily trafficked passageway, not just for cars. If you pay attention, there's a lot of people walking up and down there. We have several apartment structures that have low, lower-income housing, they're not, you know, they're not the biggest luxury housing. People have like working-class people, and a lot of them walk, because they're, it's really convenient to walk to the public transport from here. So I like this project. I don't love this project, but I like it. It's, I'm torn, just because it's big. I'm sorry. I feel the amenities being offered are worthwhile, and that's all I really got to say right now. I think I have a few things I could probably bring up, but I would like to let someone else speak. Susan?
I have a few things to say about it. First of all, I think the design is very good use in terms of recessing it into this property right now. Every time I drive by there, I kind of look at it, and then I, and I think, why does it look this way? It looks neglected. It doesn't really have any native trees. It's sort of, so I really appreciate the intent of the design, how it's been sunk into the property. I think that 54% is a lot better than the requirement in terms of the space of lot coverage. And adding so many more trees is wonderful at that location. The addition of infrastructure is particularly nice for Encinitas. We don't have sidewalks in some areas, and there's a lot of pedestrian and bike traffic. I also like the protected crosswalk that was added. That's a good feature, because you're directly across, and this project, unlike some of the others on Quail Garden Road, this is on Encinitas Boulevard, which is already a commercial and a major arterial roadway. So I support it, and I think that we don't really have a choice in terms of the waiver requested. I apologize for those people who live very close by, who are not happy with having this density brought in, but we do need affordable housing, and it does comply with our objective standards. So this project will help us meet those goals and comply with state mandates. I think I feel like Commissioner Doyle, Chair Doyle, I like the project. I won't say that I love it, but it's a good project.
Thank you.
I would support this project. I think it's an attractive project. It's a difficult site with all the terrain. I think you guys have done a good job of managing the slopes and creating really nice pedestrian spaces in the landscape. So I find the architecture attractive, mostly to the west, I guess, but I think it meets all of our requirements here at the city, and I would be hard-pressed to see a reason to deny any of the waivers. I don't know that we have that. It's a very high bar to achieve denial, and I wouldn't want to in this case. So I support the project. I would encourage us to make a quick action to, this developer, I think, has gone above and beyond what several of their projects have offered the city, and I'd like to reward that with some, with an approval tonight.
Just really briefly, I did drive around the property after I saw the plans. I drove around the property to see kind of what it would look like from all the different angles, and I did drive into the apartment complex to the north of it, to see what it would look like from that apartment complex. And I didn't have any really serious concerns about how it would look from that particular, the parking, really, that parking, that apartment building, the parking lot is the area that butts the back of this development. So, and just in my driving around, and also just, I mean, this is an area that I drive every day, I don't think it's going to be something that's going to be shocking to anybody once it's in. I think it's one of those things that looks like it's shocking, because it's an empty lot right now, but I think that once the facility is in, and the amenities are there, it's not going to be a shocking structure for down Encinitas Boulevard, which already has a lot of multifamily apartment buildings along Encinitas Boulevard. And it also is across from the grocery store and other amenities. I actually really like the crosswalk, because I think that really will tie into the other apartment complexes that are in the area, and provide people all the way down Encinitas Boulevard, and along Quail Gardens Drive, ability to cross the road safely. As you drive down Encinitas Boulevard, there are very, very few opportunities for people to cross the road safely, and I think that this is a great opportunity for that, and will provide a lot of help for connectivity within Encinitas. I like the location of this project. I like all the amenities. I think you guys kind of did above and beyond. With our new objective design standards, we have a little matrix of what needs to go in in order for it to meet the design standards, and you didn't have to do that, you weren't subject to our matrix. But I do think that you put a lot of amenities into this project, and I like that. I like that you made it a place where people can live and play and work at the property, and would want to stay, because it does have a lot of amenities for a wide variety of people. I like where you put the three-bedroom unit. I like that you put it close to the pool. And it was important to me to know that information, because I really like to see that low-income units are afforded the same closeness to a lot of the amenities that the non-affordable units are. I like that you also, that you hid the parking, so that parking's not visible from the street. I appreciate that, too. That's all I have.
Hi, thanks. Anyone else? Steve?
I'd make a motion to approve the project and adopt a staff report resolution.
I'll second.
All right.
May I request a friendly moment with the memo?
Including the memo issued today.
And Commissioner Doyle?
I do have one more comment. All of the units are rental. And for city council, and for the record, I oppose 100% rental property. It doesn't affect her in whether we approve this or not, but it's just so much better for generational wealth building to have ownership and build equity.
Well, I'll make a counterpoint to that, because as you know, I disagree very strongly on that one. I feel that ownership of deed-restricted, low-income units don't build generational wealth. The wealth is, goes up with the median income. You know, 10, 20 years from now, you can't sell them for millions of dollars. You can sell them for just a little bit more than you paid. Whereas I see the rental income is what we really need. Low-income rental and affordable rental housing is going to work as bridge housing. And again, as you've mentioned, this has no bearing on our decision tonight, but I like that it's rental. I really appreciate, I think that's what we mostly need here in town. And it's okay for us to disagree. We'll, we have a motion in a second, we're just waiting for the last votes. And it looks like the motion passes with four yes votes and one absent member, Commissioner Prendergast. And thank you very much. Let me dig my script and see where we're at. Are we actually? Let's see. All right. Give people a second or two to clear out. What, you don't want to stick around? We're talking about future items and secretary reports? All right, guys, I'm going to ask everyone to take it outside. We still have items on our agenda here. Thank you very much. Are there any future items added by planning commissioners? Hearing none. Do we have any planning commissioner reports? Steve, got something?
I don't have a report, but I do have a question. We got like a zillion emails that seem very late, you know, on this project, and after reading, I don't know, 900 pages, at some point, I feel like I don't have time to read an email if it comes in at 4:00 PM or whatever. Is there a procedure that, a cutoff that could be made to say, you know, if it's not received by noon that day, or, anyway, I'm not always monitoring my email up till the minute I arrive here. up till the minute I arrive here.
I'm in the same position.
I believe we do what city council does, and we get as many correspondence to you as possible on the day of.
Yeah, and I think they, I think we could find out more details about being consistent.
I bet there's a 3:00 PM cutoff.
3:00 PM is typically the cutoff. We still send them because we want to make sure they're part of the record, but it is difficult to expect that they all be read, so it is encouraged for people to send them well in advance to us, but we can't control when they send them to us. However, I do think it's important, like when staff sends a memo, that we go through the memo, that when we pulled it up tonight, that that be something that is, something that we do so that the public and the commission is aware of those changes.
I would appreciate that, too, because one of the emails, I did see the staff report, I think while I was still at work, but then the, there was an email that came in from a member of the public at like 5:15, and I read it in the parking lot before I walked in, and, you know, from my phone, so, so if we can work toward something, I don't know how we do that.
Maybe it just needs to be a statement to the public if they've sent it after 3:00 PM. There's a chance that we haven't read it. I appreciate that you guys would forward it on for whatever value it possibly had, that you have forwarded it to us, but that there's an understanding that if we've got it after 3:00, we may not have really received it.
Because I usually tell people that. If it comes after 3:00, by 3:00, I'm making my notes. I'm going over my plans. I'm pretty much taking my eyes off of email, and I'm usually not going to look, maybe a quick glance on the way out the door, but it's hectic the last few hours. So, good point. Do we have anything else on this, or we'll move straight on to secretary reports from Ann Calamusi?
I don't, I don't really have any. I think I could just reiterate the ones from the last meeting, which is that on June 21st, the Pyrrhus Appeal will be heard by city council, as well as that same day is the AB 2011 SB 6 joint session will also be on that day from 3:00 to 5:00 PM.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Just to clarify, because I think it went back and forth, but the mature tree ordinance has been scheduled for like late June or?
If I can have about a minute to see if it's on our calendar. Let's see here.
Yeah, that one bounced around a lot, as I recall. There's something towards the end. I've got something on my calendar on the 29th of June.
There was a tentative one sent out, but I'm not quite sure if it was confirmed.
I think I just penciled it in.
It's on the city calendar for June 29th.
June 29th?
The joint session.
Or mature tree?
Yeah, I can double-check right now, too.
And just to reiterate, the planning commission is, does not meet in July, right?
That is correct. We are dark in July, just like council.
Good.
I'm probably heading for Sweden on the first.
So, I have a question of staff. Are there any changes to any of the other appeals that are in process, or is everything status quo?
The, no changes to the appeals. There is the Beacons Beach parking lot on the following, the June 20. Make sure I get the date correct here. 28th, I believe. 28th, June 28th, city council hearing is the Beacons Beach parking lot appeal. And I do see the mature tree ordinance on the calendar, city calendar, on June 29th.
At 4:00 PM.
At what time is that?
4:00 PM.
All right. Anything else? June, July, I'll see you guys maybe on August 3rd. So, I'm going to adjourn this meeting till our next regular meeting, August 3rd. Thank you, everyone.